Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna finally call this meeting to order. And of course, our apologies for the last time because we couldn't get the technology to work. So we're gonna be hearing the agenda items that we had originally voted for the June 9th, okay? So the meeting is called Order at six oh seven. And can you please do the roll call for the termination of court?
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Corvillo.
Here.
Commissioner Salazar.
President.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Barrego.
Present.
We have court.
Great, so will you all stand? So Ross, could you just make a quick name just please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this home with the liberty of the free and of the
So some of the ground rules for our meeting tonight, we have a pretty full agenda. We have several public hearings still to go through. So I'm without a limit to speaking time to about three minutes, okay? If you are speaking as a group and you are gonna be saying the same thing over and over again, maybe you can pick a spokesperson or just say, hey, that person's already said what I was gonna say, so I don't need to speak. That way we can move things along, okay? So with that, do I have an approval of the agenda? So. Someone second?
Second.
Okay.
Have a move?
I'll probably start it, but.
All right, Commissioner Chavez? Second.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So maybe I can call you.
I'm a call.
A present.
Oh, please.
Yeah. Oh, approval. Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Green. Commissioner Barrego.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Corvillo.
Yes.
That motion was carried since.
Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to hear those comments or this is from visitors? Okay? Mohammed, do we have any items table from the primary?
I mean.
The night?
No.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna be moving into our public hearing. So let me read the statement again, please. Bear with me here. So the following cases are quasi judicial in nature and the hearing will be conducted under provisions required by the New Mexico Court of Appeals. This includes the identification of parties and the swearing in of all who wish to provide testimony. The opportunity to cross examine, to ask questions, will be provided to all parties. So our first public hearing is Public Hearing twenty twenty-two dash nine. So this is a request. Summary plot approval request from Sonia Del Santos applicant is requesting restatement of Marty's Meadows subdivision plat. So I need to ask the counselors, is there anyone, I'm sorry commissioner, is there anyone who has a conflict of interest or that has had exportation occasion related to this case? No?
No.
Good. Okay. So let's swear in, the parties are gonna be speaking and asking questions during this presentation, so. Mister Director Mohammed Hussein, we're gonna swear you in for every case that you're gonna be speaking about with this here, so. If you will, you stand and attest, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you, may be seen. So I guess Sonia, I hope you can hear me, I don't know if you're standing or not, but you swear to affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks, thank you. Okay. So are there any neighborhood property owners who received notice that wish to speak tonight?
Not necessarily.
Are there any, I'm sorry, sir? Are there any neighbors or property owners who received notice that wish to speak tonight on this first public hearing about Marty's Meadows subdivision? Any of you here wishing to speak, or are you just here for information?
We're just here.
Okay. Okay, all right, if you need to speak, I need to swear you in, that's why I'm asking. Yep, okay. Is there any member of the general public wishing to speak on this matter for the Marty's Meadows subdivision? Okay. So staff, would you please present your case?
Thank you so much, honorable planning commission chair and honorable member of the planning commission. We, in this case, this whole agenda was rescheduled for some point there to get certain reasons, but. The public notice requirements were set according to our planning permission notice requirements prior to this and and according to this is what is scheduled was specific eight. So we are, just for the record, I'm saying that we're following the same notice requirement that was set according to our planning permission requirements. So the city council, we're gonna allow planning permission approve this Marty's Meadows in May of nineteen ninety-eight. That we could find the survey plat as per survey plat recommendations that we have as a legal subdivision. The order at that time, Mr. Martinez, recorded the dedication and easement survey that went to the Rio Grande County on May twenty-first nineteen ninety-two. Page eight-nine-two-five-six-six, page book, page eight-nine-two. And then it came to the notice last year that some residents could not find their subdivision. Plat, rather they had easement and dedication survey. And I just haven't kept to know one of the deed of one of the residents, but we mentioned deed was also referring to the easement and dedication survey that we. Could you bring up the old survey, it should be in the. There?
Excuse me, can you turn around like that so that everybody can hear you?
We'll go here.
You know what you should do, Mohammed, pull that podium out a little bit and you just push your stuff once, and that way everyone will hear you. That's great.
Yay!
No?
I asked this part. So, what happened was, the dedication and easement survey was a survey of referral for any deed because you have to have a legal description of the property. And I I can show you one of the residents that they have a deed, it was referring to the easement and dedication survey, but that is not the legal. Description of the property when it comes to subdivision, you have to have subdivision survey as well. That survey plat was approved but not recorded. So what our intention today, we are here on one of the residents' request. That we are restating the survey, the dedication and easement survey that was submitted, we're not changing any block size, we're not changing any legal description. We're just renaming the survey plat so it reflects the the correct legal description that that any other subdivision would have.
Can I ask a question?
No, not yet.
Oh, not yet, yeah. Well, I'm actually thinking about it.
Yeah, and just for the record, we also refer to the legal and I've also invited one of our land use attorneys. Who have worked on this, so that if you have any questions, they can all, they will also be available to answer any related questions as well. But this is, the property is, actually that we're, we'll take, will bring the property in compliance, matching the zoning and the legal laws to the reality on the ground. We would not change again anything on the subdivision plat itself. But with that, I said, right questions?
Let me start off the questioning, so and and really just a confirmation, Mohammed, because Lydia brought her paperwork in this evening, that was a big help. So we we are to understand, because of her example. That the deed identifies the space number, in her case, her space number on the deed. And refers to the deed of the the document that says dedication easement. As the survey that they are, were using at the time to sell these lots. So there was never a actual survey done, and never an actual survey that was signed and approved by anybody. So this process is fairly important for you folks to move forward and get a survey signed and actually be able to record, okay? Um, is that correct, Mohammed?
Yes, and and also would like to add something for here, that the survey that was originally done wasn't done by an engineer rather than a licensed surveyor. So it is, it would be a big help to the community actually, so that they have the legal description. And this is the help to the Marty's Meadows residents rather than that, but we're we're here to answer.
And Mohammed, will a copy of that survey, who paid that survey?
The applicant paid for that.
Paid that survey. And she's gonna have the survey reported?
Yes.
And then once it's reported, will the other residents be able to even copy of that?
Yes.
You won't be able to?
Yes, they can request the county and they can get the survey.
Copy, okay. So any of the counselors have questions for Mohammed on this restatement of the plat? All right, so applicant, do you have, Sonia, do you have any questions on Mohammed on this prop process?
Uh, no, sir, I don't.
Okay. We have a neighborhood property owner, or a property, if you want to ask questions.
I just, I just wanted to ask him, I wanted to.
Let me just swear you in, go for it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you wanna stand, so. You swear or affirm that the testimony you get will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You may ask a question.
The truth as I know it. I just wanted to know if I understood him properly. He said the surveys had been done for each of the individual things, but not for the whole thing, I did, I misunderstood.
Will you show him that this is the survey that was done, and he can point out what it was?
This is a new survey, could you pull up the the previous survey, which is the the old survey listed on the folder?
Is it inherent or?
No, this is another one in your folder.
Trust.
You see here seventy-five feet, you will see the same, it will say the old survey.
Last.
Yes. It's the same size of seventy-seven thousand five hundred square feet.
So this is the original survey that was actually reported with the documents when they purchased their lots.
That's correct, yes.
By the, by the.
By the engineer. By the developer, this survey was used. And it's the easy survey because go down though, so we can see the whole survey. You don't see here, it's a planning commission here, but you don't see the surveyors. It's Marvin registered, this is the engineer who has staffed engine, but you don't see any surveyor's license.
Okay. Okay. So just a follow-up question then, so, and and is the attorney here to speak?
Yes.
Would it be a good time for them to talk?
Of course.
And if you could just ask her, ask him that nothing that we are doing here tonight will in any way damage or alter or change anything that they are thinking.
Corey, would you please give a brief overview on this and what we are doing?
Sure, yes, absolutely. I'm Corey Strike, I'm one of the attorneys with the local government on behalf of Estenola. So in essence, really, what has happened was, back when Mr. Martinez had gone to create this subdivision. There was a survey done, a formal survey that was done by a survey, a surveyor, excuse me, and certified. But unfortunately, and I didn't know, I was not prepared for this very well, unfortunately, it only references the plats that he owns, and so you can kind of see their their very missing detail. It really just references track A and track B. Relevant for us is track B. What had then happened was that he brought that that survey before the county, or I'm sorry, before the city and said, this is what I want to do. And mapped out that plat, and so in in the process of creating subdivision, generally you have to bring a sketch first before you can vote on anything, because you need to see what it's gonna look like. So he brought forward that sketch, and that was then turned into this dedicated easements subdivision that we now have. So it had gone from a licensed surveyor into the hands of the engineer, who was gonna be really concerned with those utility easements. And so it sort of skipped a step because that that sketch happened.
Hey, Corey? You, your audio was horrible, and I don't think the public can really hear what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, you're okay, let me swap over to a different microphone, that should help. Okay, how is that? Okay. So what had ended up happening was that he had gone from that original plat that was done by that licensed surveyor. Gone through the preliminary step of getting the sketch done, which didn't have to go through any formal processes. It was voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time to approve moving to the next step. Then it had gone to the engineer, who then created that utility easement dedication. And so ultimately, it looks like it was just a a step in the process that got missed. So it had been surveyed appropriately, but the lots hadn't been surveyed, or if they had, that survey was never turned into the commission and was never turned into the clerk. So it didn't get recorded appropriately, and so consequently, what we have now is this dedication, that it looks like tax and revenue. The county assessor and most of the landowners who have been buying and selling these properties up until now, they've just been relying on that dedicated easement. Survey essentially, for lack of a better word, they've been relying on that as the survey, even though technically it doesn't fit the legal description. So the purpose of the re-survey is that it is approved by a licensed surveyor, which is what's required by the New Mexico Subdivision Act. So this is a restatement of that engineer's survey with the appropriate certification to verify that it was authentic and true to what those properties really look like.
And that will not change by by, we're going tonight, that will not alter or change anything in regards to what they legally purchased, bought, and so forth?
Uh, insofar as it'll will change anything, it will ratify or validate their right to be able to.
Help, yeah.
It it'll help, it will not harm, absolutely.
Any questions from the applicant of the legal or any questions from the neighborhood? Okay.
When you guys were talking earlier and and you were talking about who would pay for the survey. Did we each have to get our own survey?
No, you 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 can get the survey from the county, or you could get a survey from the city. You can get your own copy, but it is, it is done by one of the applicant.
Yeah.
So if, anybody could get, anyone could get the survey, copy of survey from the county.
Oh, but you're talking about the survey for the whole subdivision, right?
Yes, but it's not, there is no survey from the individual property. This is the survey for.
Could you state your name to the record man, sorry, I didn't ask that. Can you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Catherine Berg, B E R G.
So that, any other questions? Just one question. Who did the, who did the survey now?
Uh, I think, or is it?
Robert, did you go to the new survey? The new survey? Just move it aside.
Uh, it was Gerald Sandoval was the surveyor that we hired.
And so. And he's a licensed surveyor?
Yes.
Yeah, I just asked, because that's not signed, that, I'll mean that's just a survey, but it's not, you know, the dates or signature.
That's because of the preliminary, but it's approved by the planning permission, then.
I was gonna read just recently. Oh, they just did it twenty twenty-one. What, okay, yeah. All right. The date was, yeah. July, I think it did, same July. It was twenty twenty-one. Can you see the date better, somebody than us, on the date of the survey?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you have the date of when that survey was done, it's hard for us to see up on the.
When, when Gerald did it?
No, 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 when it was re-surveyed, I thought it was twenty twenty-one. It was survey.
Um, I I don't have that in front of me, let me see if I can pull it up on my computer.
Where is it?
The the date line did not have it.
I'm sorry.
The date line did not have it.
Then that's simply, that's probably concerning, because a surveyor, when they complete it, they sign and dated it, dated, so it's an official survey. And they and they stamp it with their stamp, there's a stamp on it, but you've got no date, no signature on it. Oh, we can't approve the survey. You know what I'm saying, that's why they're licensed and bonded.
So.
So, no, I know, but this survey was, I mean, do you have a copy that's signed and and dated? I mean, if I'm a surveyor, and you pay me to do something, to survey it, when I complete it, I'm gonna go ahead and date it and stamp it and.
But I'm hoping to say that this is the preliminary survey.
The preliminary survey.
Survey has to be approved by planning and zoning, and then it goes to final, correct?
Correct. Corey, is that correct, is legal?
Yes, that is correct, so what this is, is essentially, this is, it's kind of like going back to the sketch stage. So that we can recommend for actually city council approval of the final survey.
Okay.
So it's taken like a year to get to this point? Because they re-surveyed back last year, now we're twenty twenty-two. Why, why was it delayed? I mean, being that if it's.
It was delayed because there was a transition in the planning department. And then because we were trying to get to the point where we don't have to walk through all this and try to search, see if we can find those legal documents, and so they don't anywhere. If it took three months, we can get any information on the survey that was done at that time, so that's why we brought it here now.
So, so audience, I mean, just, if you want to be recognized, you need to sign in, raise your hand, and we'll swear you in.
Okay.
So we can follow all the proper procedures, okay? Uh, what is your name here?
Rita.
Rita, okay, last name?
Ortiz.
Ortiz. Is that all, Mohammed, any other questions for staff? With that, let's hear from the applicant, Sonia, would you like to speak about your application? Your request?
Yes, sir. Basically, as attorney stated, the survey was not properly named nor filed or recorded. Prior to our father's passing, it was after inheriting the property, Marty's Meadows. It was then brought to our attention, since then, we've been trying to clean up the survey, legalize it, and ultimately record it. It's been quite the lengthy process and. I I just trust that the city will approve this so we can move forward, the. The residents of Marty's Meadows can have a proper survey to rely on and my family and I can move forward.
Thank you, is that, is that your total presentation?
Yes, sir, thank you for your.
So counselors, any questions of the applicant? Staff, any questions of the applicant? Any neighborhood property owners that received notice, any questions of the applicant? Thank you so much, Sonia, very much.
Sorry, as the attorney, I have to interject, I I do want to make it very, very clear to the applicant that we do require that that survey is completed. When it does go before the city council, so just to be clear, it is going to need to be signed, dated, and stamped by the surveyor at that time. Prior to us being able to bring it before the council, so just to be a hundred percent transparent, that we will need that to happen.
Yes, sir, we will absolutely get that done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any neighborhood property owners that wish to speak in this process? Right, anybody from the general public? Close the session for public comments? Okay. And at this time, I will entertain a motion from the from the commissioners, so we can have the session and vote. My emotions. I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All the favors?
I'll take a roll call.
Okay, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
Prove.
For the motion.
For the motion.
Commissioner Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Corvillo?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Green?
For the motion.
Mr. Barrego?
For the motion.
That motion was carried, thank you.
We'll close the public hearing at this time, and the time is six thirty. Thirty. P M. We heard yours last time, sorry it wasn't recording, so.
I figured it was so good you wanted to hear again.
So counselor, leave, our commissioners, we've heard this and voted on this already once. Can we expedite this, we'll go through the process and just do everything, you'll still be able to give a slide presentation if you wish.
I can make another thirty seconds.
Okay, so at this time, I'm open, at this time, I'm open to public hearing for request twenty twenty-two dash ten. Uh, the time is six thirty-four. The request is a very to request by Rosalind Sarita. Requested various to build an accessory dwelling unit at seven oh three Mountain View Street. The property is currently zoned as urban residential R six. Okay, so staff, would you please make your. Presentation, I'm going to be brief.
Honorable Chair, Member of the Planning Commission. The question from you is the variance request from Ms. Sarita to build a accessory dwelling unit at seven zero three Mountain View Street. UPS one zero four seven one two two three five six, one to zero, this property currently is currently resolved, but it is zoned as a residential R six. The notice of this public publication and for this case was. Published in Rio Grande Sun, and the Navy property owners within two hundred feet of the city were also informed. As well as we put out the sign up there to advertise this about the public hearing process. This property is about zero point six nine acres and about thirty thousand square feet. And the land published property is hundred seventeen, hundred sixty feet, hundred sixty feet deep and almost two hundred and seventy feet wide. And it has an adventure structure on it, which is eight eighteen hundred fifty square feet, which is as a, as a primary dwelling unit. And according to our our code, the accessory dwelling units are allowed only in R one and R two. Because the reason that they are of acre and a half, if a lot, but because this is R six. And its minimum lot size is seven thousand five hundred square feet, that's why we don't allow the accessory dwelling, but this particular lot is the bigger size. And that side is over, surpassed the, the, uh, the, the half the acre size, so that's why if. The planning commission is to allow this, the second dwelling unit to not. Be over fifty percent of the main dwelling unit, which is nine, it would be nine maximum nine hundred twenty-five square feet. And it, again, it should follow all the setback departments. According to the plan that was submitted, it does. And I also want to mention that according to the D R T view, it should be connected to this city sewer and see water, this dwelling unit.
But not its own. We're not, the D R T has made a recommendation that she has her own, a new service for that, and that's something that we talked about. In fact, I hope when we go tonight, we guarantee and not require that, so.
That's, I I I'm just here as a messenger from the.
Yeah. Anything from the counseling's perspective? Is there any questions, Miss Gwen, you were here last time, that's pretty straightforward.
Yes, Jeff. Okay, I asked the last time, what you were saying about this, you put in your, I think the size of the property was point six nine acres and. Um, while it said it was point six two, but there's a a document here that says point six two, so you're saying it was point six five.
So.
I just want to make clear to which, which is the correct.
So on our website, it says zero point six two, but. So on our website, it says zero point six two, but I had a check on their counties that said it's point zero six nine.
This is a document.
So, and yes, if it's point zero six two, even then, it is twenty two, twenty seven thousand.
That's fine. I just want to make sure for the record that it's clear who, what is the action site.
Any other questions from the commission?
And one of the last things, there were some conditions that you also noted on your second page, as you were saying down at the bottom the last time there. It was uh four items or five items or let's see, one, two, three, four items, such as suggestions that needed to be uh addressed. Uh or those some items that are going to be asked to be addressed for. Uh by Ms. Rosalind to get this done, also to include, other than hooking up to city and sewer.
Sewer lines. Yes.
Can we ask you to read those, uh Mr.?
Yes, the accessory dwelling unit should not be more than fifty percent of the main dwelling unit. And which is not greater than nine hundred twenty five square feet. The total lot coverage by all these structures should not exceed the thirty five percent of the total lot. Which they, which they don't. Accessory dwelling unit should not be less than five feet from the rear or the side lot line. And accessory dwelling unit should not be less than twenty five feet from the front line and ten feet from the nearest building. Even the conditions.
Okay, that's that's fine. Just one note, if you're you're likely.
I should give her a presentation. Any other questions on staff? Thank you, Mohammed. So with that, uh if I can ask the applicant to stand, uh and I'm just swearing, if you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll hear will be the truth.
Yeah.
Please come to the podium, Mohammed. Maybe you can just answer some of the questions and then we'll just commission after your presentation.
Okay. Honorable Commissioner, Mr. Chair, my name is Rosalina. I'm glad it's working this time. I am hoping to give a variance to my property to build a small accessory dwelling unit. As Mr. Mohammed mentioned, uh it will be much smaller, less efficient on the main side. We're going to do less than eight hundred square feet. So that's the plan for it. Uh it will need all the setback requirements for it. And as we discussed previously, uh my understanding was that I could potentially just need sewer and water that's on the property. About creating a new service, however, I'm willing to meet that accommodation if required. The residence will be used for residential use only. It's going to be used for a family member to live on the property. I think that's about all I have. If there's any questions, you have to have to answer them.
Okay, any questions from the commission of the applicant? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just for the records, since it didn't record the last time, there were some neighbors that were here that spoke in favor of the request. And they had no problem with that, so. I'm gonna ask the neighbors, actually, is there any neighboring, uh any individuals that wish to speak on behalf of the, of this process? They, they were, you're right. As last time, there were some neighbors that spoke in favor of requests, so that's right. Just for the record, but sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And can I say one more to show you? I actually checked on point six nine versus point six two. If you look at the document, you like submitted underneath legal description and actually zero point six nine. I understand. I called the county. They are going to correct it when the website gets updated, I believe, in October. So we have that correct.
You gave us our property, huh?
Hey, it was worth this.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions?
No, I believe you can add this. Uh are there any neighboring property owners wish to speak on this process, this uh request? No members from the general public either wish to speak? Let's see. I think we can come down here to close the session for the comments. We'll close the session for the comments. And uh so uh before we hear motions, um I, let's see if we can get to. When we make the motion, I think we need to be specific on the conditions, which conditions we are going to make the motion to include. Okay, and that way we follow through and 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 vote correctly, okay? So do I hear a motion from anybody here to approve or? I I should, okay, move to approve uh based on the. Recommendations by staff? Is that going to be to approve the D R T recommendations for individual utilities? Oh, the last time that I made this motion. Yeah, it would be fine for her to be able to hook up to the existing. Correct. City uh utilities that she has, and I don't change anything for her stuff. We labor that at this point. Okay, do I have a second? I said, okay. Any discussion? Call for that, well?
Commissioner Chavez?
For the motion.
Commissioner Martinez?
For the motion.
Commissioner Gravio?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Green?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion was carried.
It's probably will pay the public that here. And it is now uh six forty five. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the uh. Our agenda, three. We will open the public hearing for request twenty twenty two eleven. This is a variance request from Catherine Bennett. We put the variance of pipe at the gate on property located in Santa Cruz Historic District. And you can see numbers associated. So as any uh councillors uh or any commissioner rather uh have a conflict of interest or is any of you uh participated in the expertise indication of this case? So uh the parties that wish to speak, uh the applicant is present, it's Bennett, how are you? Are there any neighboring property owners here to speak and receive notice? Please raise your hand. How many, how about any other members of the general public who wish to speak? Catherine, would you please stand, sign this statement? You swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be this truth?
I did.
Okay, thank you. So with that, uh staff, could you please present your opinion?
Honorable Chair and Member of the Plan Commission. Ms. Bennet requests a variance of pipe for the gate on the property located in Santa Cruz Historic District. U P C one zero four eight, one two zero two one one nine four one. And Ms. Bennet owns about point four one acre parts of Santa Cruz Historic District. It is a vacant lot. And as for my conversation that I had with with Ms. Bennet in the pre-application meeting, uh she didn't doesn't have any any development plan yet. Or for this particular property, rather, she wants to sort of fence and then install a gate. Or maybe it could be used as 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 maybe a site for where where all those people who come for the marriage ceremonies or some other events. It could maybe hang out there or just to maybe for as hatters of the of the historic district. But a- according to our city code requirements, you have a specific height for the gates, a specific height for fences. A- according to the city code, a signal one, the fences, adding the gates. A side of certain gate shall not be constructed as per instructions the public writer made. Or obstruct the view of particular or pedestrian traffic as per this second C. Gate shall not exceed ten feet in height. But this gate is eleven feet, but it had a structure that it could raise sixteen feet. And in R one and R two zoning district, structures for the. The structures for any gate cannot exceed twenty feet in the height of R one, which it is not. This is the historic district and historic district, it varies from case to case. The the historic district and the visual historic district, it should look like historic district. It should have a physical view of historic district. Uh it should not alter the aesthetics and the structure and design and. The material of any development should reflect the history, the culture, and traditions of the community. And it decided from case to case. And it is approved with the uh with the permission of the planning commission. That's why this case is brought to you. To decide. But when we had a conversation with about this in in development beauty, they had certain. Certain questions about this, and I just want to share with you that they, that while we started to not have an issue with the fire, often did discuss that the gate height should be considered if. Ever development is later happened. Truck would go inside because if there is eleven feet high, the truck is higher for the bike truck, you may have to remove that the top. Top structure that it is there to comply with the fire sentence of fire truck going there. This is just an additional structure that is on the on the top of the gate that raises as high to fifteen feet, otherwise it's about eleven feet. I also had a recommendation from the utilities department, from the street departments. That it should have a fence of sixteen, fully set by requirements of minimum fifteen feet from the entrance for the gate. And a gravel entrance of twenty five feet recommended if there is if ever development happens on this property. And I also had a strong. From the utilities department. That they should have a fifteen feet given these these names here, so that that should also be taken care by the development as an issue. And 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 with that, I said, any questions?
Can you uh just before we start questions? Uh of these D R T recommendations? Can you review some of these and what the current uh plan is presented beyond me?
So this, I I just correctly knew how how this this lot looks like. There's nothing because there is no development.
Right.
On all this condition pertaining that if there is any development. So that there there is no development on the easement. And all these things of road needs to be made when there is development happening, because development is initiated.
So when they're talking about a fifteen foot setback, even what are they, what what are they talking about?
So the fifteen setback is made here for the gate. So you, yes, you cannot put the gate in on on the street, so there is views obstructed, so any in in private cars.
So how far will it be from the road now, the way it's proposed?
Uh it it's not proposed anything yet.
Well, she could put the gate up, right?
Yes, so that's why we're suggesting have at least fifteen feet from the road when it's developed. No, for now, right now, like that setback is for now, when they install a gate, but are there for the easement?
Have you said, have you asked the? Call, call, call the org, I did. That took me straight. So when you're took looking at this fifteen foot east uh setback now, have you talked to the applicant about that setback?
Yes, so when I had conversation with the applicant, they said they would not put it on right on the road, but they will. Free up some space from the current, so that there it's not at all.
Will it be fifteen feet?
Uh that's, that was not discussed how much feet it will be, but I told them that it will be at least fifteen to twenty feet that they had to.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the commission for for staff?
So let me just clarify, make sure that I understand. So her property line there, that's where she apparently wanted to put the fence, but now she has to put the fence or or the gate fifteen feet from her property line.
Correct.
From the road to property.
From the road to property.
That's just for the gate or for the entire fence?
For the gate.
Just the gate?
Yeah.
Now purpose of beef, so people pull in, get off the road?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Mister J D first and then you all play, Mister, what's his?
Do you know where the utility lines are? The what, a gas line and uh dirty water and clean water? Do we have water there for the residents of the city?
Yes.
Mark, do you know where the lines are there?
Uh I I mean, I, there is a line on the Marquardt Road, but I'm not sure. I can't find it out for now where they're at, but the fifteen feet is.
The gas line. Is two feet away from the property line on the on the roadside.
So you, yes, I I.
Something has to be done about that or or not.
So that's that's why we're proposing fifteen feet from the road. So if there is any gas line running, they are not on on the road, on those lines.
Okay, on this uh on this picture here. Uh so detailed section view. The way the structure is uh built into the. The building is built different than. Than the bricks. I see here on the left side. On the left side, this says number six. There's the existing gray now. Number seven is the. Existing roadway. Everything major from the existing roadway to the.
There are go by feet.
So from the bottom of the staircase to the road is five feet away.
That's that's how it looks like. That's what they presented, but we have brought up our own recommendation, because that's what they presented.
How far is it going to be going the road?
It's more than that. It's like ten feet. There's there's a, there's a room there for a wide sidewalk, which I would love to see. Uh eventually, and then we set everything back onto the property, my, the gate back onto the property by probably fifteen feet. And then.
So let's, the question is staff, and then we'll have Ms. Bennet give her presentation. We can ask her all these questions and kind of keep things in order as well, okay? And any other questions for staff? Uh so they're recommending fifteen foot setback to this gate. That's what the director's recommending. Any other conditions, uh Mohammed, would you be more up on the?
So, sure, other conditions would pertain to the development.
Okay.
That aside proposal, yes, no.
Okay. I will, and you have some questions?
At this point of clearance, and just to add, whenever there will be development, it will also come to the planning commission. Because this is a historic district. Any development that happens to the end of this district will be approved by the planning commission.
My only question was, is this property fenced now?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
There there is an existing fence around the property?
Okay.
Good. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mohammed. Uh I guess I should ask, I'm sorry, Mohammed, before you sit down. Applicant, any questions of staff before you sit down?
No, but I can help clarify something.
Okay, you'll be up next. Any neighboring property owners that uh received notice and wish to question staff? So that, Ms. Bennet, it's your turn to speak and you can please uh state your name directly when you speak, please.
Captain Bennet. And can we go back to the drawings on Mark Castle? So this end of the stairs, bottom of stairs, going back right there. Is on my property. And then we, and 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 the, it has stairs. It's not going to be a drive-through. There's no way to drive through it. I'm planning a park there. If we can't to get the plaza. If we can't get to any and stick comply with the plaza like it is, making it a real plaza again. Um I'm gonna make a plaza on this piece of land. And so this won't, this won't be a drive-through gate. It'll be a walk. And the end of my property is probably at the bottom of that. And then you've got. I don't know, at least five feet of 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 road, next road. So I won't, I won't be, we're, we're, it'll probably be more than fifteen feet by the time we get through. And this is a hi- a hill, J D, so you know, the the road comes here. And we're gonna cut that out of my property and put the steps in and then the gate.
Can I ask something?
Yeah.
Yeah, what you got?
I can ask. The bottom of the staircase. Which is uh past line six two, right? Is that the bottom of that staircase, this is on your property?
Yes.
It's inside your fence line?
No, it's not inside the fence line.
It's not inside your fence line?
No, I don't, actually, I'm not, I don't think so. I have to check.
On the, on the property then?
No. It's on my property, but I think the fence was there originally and eventually I'll replace. It's on my property, but I think the fence was there originally and eventually I'll replace that fence, but. I'm just not prepared to right now. I want to get the gate secured and underground so that it won't get stolen.
Anything else you need to say about your project?
Um. Well, I really, I really believe in the Santa Cruz Historic District and I really want to do everything I can. You know, to augment that and to bring it to life.
Yes.
So you're not planning on having any dwellings, no need in the market property? You want to make it a plaza for the church or a park?
Possibly, not for the church, right for the community, yes, yeah.
So. Do you have some additional existing property there?
I do.
Okay, so it butts up to your other properties?
Uh, can you go to that map that shows Rincon de Estrella? That's good. So I am. I own that uh catacorted from it. I own that that piece of land right there. And I own this piece of land here.
One on the right, right there?
One on the right, yeah.
This this parcel and this parcel.
Yeah.
All right. So that's the.
And and this is Rincon de Estrella, so there's a road.
So so it's a this one, sorry, the blue?
The the blue roof.
I'm sorry. Um. Yeah, yes, sir. Sorry.
You own the property on which side there?
We see Rincon de Estrella upside down. I own this property.
Okay, and then you own another.
And then I own this one. Um. Right there.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so she owns the corner property at the at where the cross is, where the coffee shop used to be.
Yes.
And then the property behind.
Uh, no, it's up, it's up above the. It's this one here. Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Could could you bring the um fence of the gate, bring it up? About your gate? So you wanna, no, not that one, the one that was showing earlier?
That one.
That one there, yes.
Put the gate.
So Ms. Bennet, you want to have an eleven foot gate? And then that can go up to sixteen feet if you put the fancy design on this one.
It's a, yeah, it's a part of it. The actual and it's a beautiful old antique.
Not that one together.
Oh.
There.
Yeah, that one. So any reason you want it so high?
It just, it is that way. It is that way. And these side panels. Um, actually hold the gate. And um. It's a beautiful, very heavy wrought iron gate. Which I think will be a meeting of the of the plaza.
So Ms. Bennet, you're the the gate, I think that that archway is comes off the posts that support the gate. It's actually a part of the gate inside the entrance archway.
It's part of the side panels. The side panels aren't quite that big. They're they're narrower. And and it it has to be, and and it's part of that.
But that archway, that that portion that's arched with the one of the design?
The design, yeah.
That's welded to both of the sides of the structure of the gate, right?
It's welded to the side. I don't know what it calls the sidelines.
But to those, it doesn't open, it's not part of the opening. The gate, gate usually denotes what opens.
It's welded to the stabilizer.
The gate opens to that, but that's that's where there's a concern about a fire truck getting through there.
There's no reason for a fire truck to go through there.
There's not gonna ever be a dwelling. There's not gonna be a dwelling.
I mean, yeah, well, right, with your intentions, but if it ever sold or something or changed.
If you if you the depth of the thing from either side of the road on three sides, you could get water to any part of that property. Do you know uh what the width of that property is? I I don't know.
Uh, it becomes a lot?
The lot size.
Yes.
You don't have any actual pictures of the gate you can see? Uh, it looks beautiful.
I brought, you know, I brought, I was looking for that because I took some pictures to shoot. Do you have the pictures that I took of the? Where the gate's gonna go?
Uh, I I had a face of they are asking for a pictures of the gate.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have any with me. I might have one in my phone.
So that property where you're gonna put the gate will face the church, correct?
Yes.
And you can drive all the way around that property. So we're saying that.
Using your access for a fire truck, yeah, on all on three sides.
On tree sides, tree sides, yeah.
And the gate location is down here by this structure on this corner, right?
Yeah, it's from that kind of that second uh.
Right, right, right there, nope, and there.
Where it's right there. It's it's almost directly across from the um church setback fifteen feet. Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? The current fence that you have there, the bar bar fence out there, that's not the actual property where the property, your property ends, it's closer to the road, right?
It's. It's it's hard to say. I I need to, I actually ask, um. Is he still the commissioner of the um? Uh, I can't think of his name right now. Um, he's a, he's a.
A surveyor.
A surveyor.
Quiet.
Quiet. Yeah, I asked him to survey it. Yeah, I haven't heard back from him on it.
He's not part of the commission.
Anymore, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, just one please.
That's the original. Place for the trading post one, right?
Yes.
Right. Maybe it's a stupid question.
No.
Okay, but I've been told that any question you ask is a stupid question.
That's right.
Why are you putting such a beautiful gate on a property? You're not gonna have anything on it.
I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna have a a garden areas, a fountain, uh benches. Because I really don't feel like. Where the real plaza is, which has already been cut in half by McCurdy, it's now a triangle, not a rectangle. Um, I really don't have much hope for having a plaza there. It's just a parking lot.
Can we go back to this picture? Okay, there was something about the fire department saying they couldn't go up there. They can't go there because it's a staircase. There's no way they can get in. But if you ever, if you take the top off. That's wrought iron. How tall are your your gates on there and and we see that if you took that top off?
I think they're like eleven feet, aren't they? But um.
It's really very.
I love it. I love it.
But but they're not gonna go up the stairs. We're putting stairs so the cars can't go up it.
You say you have stairs there, right?
Yeah.
They'll walk into the plaza.
Yes.
No, they won't drive to that gate.
Is there gonna be a parking area?
No, a park. She wants to make a park. With flowers and benches.
Yeah. And hopefully antique lights and get rid of those mercury vapor lights and then. I just gotta do what I can at the time, you know?
I'd say Ms. Bennet, you know, I I've seen, I've seen the projects that you created in that area and you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
You've taken a really amazing interest in that area and as a historic district, you, yeah, you've done a lot to to preserve that.
You're all invited out to come see it, you know, but I'd love to have you come see it because um I'm excited about it.
Yes. Uh, to leave Mr. Commissioner Martinez's question about, you know, fire trucking. You go to the side, to the side of the gate, to the left part of it, there's also a property there if a fire truck, they can go through that side of the of the property to enter the property.
Well, they won't drive to the gate anyways, it's gonna be a walk.
So right, it's gonna be a walk. And I guess that's what I don't understand when you start talking to the DRT of your staff. Right. Do they understand? Do they understand the scope of this project and what's her intent sort of make a plaza and people will be walking up the steps? They understand that?
Yes, so the the recommendation that were were subjective there in development intervention.
There's no development plans.
Okay, I just want to reiterate what uh Mr. Chairman said that we thank you, you know, your vision and and doing something like this.
You know, I I really get people all the time that come by and say, good job, Khatda. So it um I think that the, I think it'll be a good thing for the community and I want it to be a good thing for the community and I want to see. There's just like, I I gotta make a whole list and you know, I can only do what I can do at a time.
Well, thank you.
Because they spent.
So that and then you move this along here. So staff, any questions of the applicant?
All right.
Do you have any property owners present? Do you have any uh questions for the applicant?
So was I understanding correctly that it she, it would be a venue where people could actually, like be married at the church?
Sir, let me just uh state your name.
My name is Marvin Valencia.
Let me just swear you in uh if you're gonna speak, yeah, so. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony will give will be the truth?
Sure.
Okay, could you say your name? I may ask you a question.
My name is Marvin Valencia. Oh. Um, my question was, if I'm understanding correctly, it's a venue and the church is directly across. It's to the west of the church.
It's to the east.
East, east.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
Yeah.
The the church is to the west. So actually, when you come down the staircase, you're actually seeing the church, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so like people could get married at the church and have this venue in order to be able to have um maybe their reception or whatever.
Yeah, it's possible that right now people go to McCurdy where there's a little patch of grass after a wedding. You know, and so I I just want to draw activity to that plaza and attention to that plaza. I think that's wonderful. Thank you. Come help.
I'm gonna close this session for public comments, okay? I'll entertain a motion from the councilors and before we do that though, uh Mohammed, on your uh on your staff report, would you uh? Please uh speak for us any recommendations you have and also. Any type of additional conditions you may have.
So I I would say for this condition would be at least fifteen feet of. Setback from the front, but other than that, other requirements that would be there, so that we're discussing DRT, will come to any of these things that is above the plan is a historic district. But it will have to come with a planning permission, I think, from the area.
So they just send the gate in the proper space, give him the foot from the road, how many conditions may be, well, you should know this time. So do I have a motion from the commission? Yes?
Motion to approve.
Second, okay? Any discussion from the commission?
Sorry, who's second?
Joe Salazar. Any discussion from the motion? All the questions?
Mister Chavez?
Where's the motion?
Mister Maria?
Where's the motion?
Mister Correio?
For the motion.
Mister Salazar?
Where's the motion?
Mister Quinn?
Where's the motion?
Mister Borrego?
In support of the motion.
That motion was carried. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
When I um had the little coffee house, people would come in from around here. I didn't know what I had stumbled onto. And people, people edu- from here educated me about the place. And man, it caught on. I I got it. And and that's when I decided to do something. So but thanks to the.
Post article, meetings, conversion things.
I'm I'm working help in the missions and to develop that. Thank you. I'm working on getting writing something. Like I'm kind of a frontline person, so I'm out there.
Well, thank you very much. I enjoy your coffee when I used to go, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
So this time I'm gonna close the public hearing. It is now seven eleven. Okay, next on the agenda. We're going to move on to item number five. This is our hearing for item number five, which is twenty twenty two thousand thirteen, various requests from our two Ohio. Property owner is requesting various to place a manufactured house on West Sanchez Street. Their property is on local commercial district B one. So here, so let me ask the commissioners. Is there anyone here that has a conflict of interest or has participated in X or J communications related case? Is the applicant present? Mister Cobb? Okay, can you please stand so I can swear in this court? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony will give will be the truth? Are there any members, any reporters that have been given notice to speak tonight?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The details of standing, search name?
Sure.
My name is Sunny Valencia, um, west from the set property.
Were you given notice?
Yes.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony will give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay. Anybody else in the general public who is to speak without giving notice? You wish to answer? Oh, were you given notice?
Oh, yeah.
No, you all give notice, okay. So are you all going to wish to speak or you're gonna represent, okay?
I'm represented.
I might want to speak.
Yes, and you are uh. You were given notice?
Uh, no, I'm just a public.
General, okay, yes. So are you, what's your name again?
Andy Clon.
Okay, and uh so again, uh. So will you, will, do you swear to affirm that the testimony will give will be the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Okay, with that staff, will you give your presentation?
Thank you so much, honorable chair and honorable member of the commission. In front of you is various request by this our two Ohio, talking owner is requesting a various to place. A manufacturer house on a mobile on the best Sanchez. A top speed zone. Local commercial district B one. And you will be speaking zero one zero four six one two zero two six seven zero four three. As per the notice of project for the planning commission, be five day and first and posted this notice of project on the property. Notify the maybe property owner as well as the real brands. The subject property consists of legal law, a single tax repulsive zone, local commercial district. E one. Which is mostly for the commercial activity. The road we, it has a road is made. On one of its sides and an irrigation ditch on the north east side. Application is requesting to place a mobile home as possible for residential purpose. However. In local commercial district B one, mobile home is not permitted, is not permitted use as per six one five. At them are city ordinance that is six hundred fifteen individual mobile home subsection C three with such that. It says that the B one, B two. And any other commercial district, mobile home and manufactured housing is not allowed. The shape of this property and location is not safe for the residential purpose because it's too close to the roadway access. And the utilities infrastructure pass right through the middle of this property. And as I mentioned, in six fifteen. As per six fifteen restricted district for mobile homes and manufactured houses. The subsection, section three, subsection D says B one local commercial district is restricted. For to place a mobile home. That's why they're asking to place a mobile home. And this is the, in the free application we discussed. That all these. Want the the cost go. They're two options here. Legally, they have to place a mobile home there at the set aside that you can use it for that's running through it. That is, it's a little. The best option would be to resource. So they should be used for the. But. The the utilities and infrastructure running through it, it makes it difficult to. To fill or to develop on a duty's infrastructure. But the city. Pretty common, city is has a plan to regroup. The utility infrastructure back there. So that it doesn't run through it. Just wanted to put out there for the back.
Anything else?
That's that's it.
So to clarify a few things, so currently we have city utilities and you say we're talking about sewer and and city water?
Correct.
And that runs right down the middle of the property where it would make it hard to place a mobile home on either side of utilities?
Yes, so because there's a P T of setback.
So you mentioned that they uh the city is planning on rerouting those utility lines. Is there a project plan for that?
There there is a project plan, but I I can't tell on the back of timeline that they have. They they may take a year or maybe two year out.
Something happened in the meantime and you put a home there, it they couldn't work on the lines.
They couldn't work on the lines.
Okay, um also on this piece of property, i- it is surrounded by everything other than B one. Is that is it just spot zone or how did it come to be one?
So I think when the city get this rezoned back in seventies or eighties, they're they said that, okay, two hundred feet from three hundred feet from the roadway is commercial, even that it has houses there. Some of the properties where they have houses there, they were not conforming use. But the vacant property, because they got rezoned, they got zone commercial, they cannot house have a house there now.
Right.
So they're turned out a commercial zone, even that is in the middle of the residential property.
So you informed the applicant that the first step, if he was able to develop this with a house, would be to rezone the property to R six, I guess that would be the zone in general, is it R six that?
That is correct.
Okay, and then he was still though have issue with the city utility running through it.
That's right.
And that would that would prevent him from doing anything with it until those lines were actually rerouted.
Yes.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions with Steph?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Why are the utilities running through the property? Does the property owner get permission, some permission for the running of the utilities?
Uh I'm not too sure. This property owner just bought this property.
Okay, so the answer to that question would have to be yes, they would have gotten easement to put those utilities through, should have disclosed those utilities when.
Exactly.
Any other questions for Steph? Uh Mr. Cotto, do you have any questions of the staff?
Um.
Neighboring property owners that received notice, do you have any questions of staff?
No, but I have comments.
You'll be able to make your comments soon, yeah. Okay, with that, thank you, Director. You will take a seat. And you will of course now have the applicant make your presentation to Cotto, which will come up and state your name and and state your case.
Uh greeting to everyone, everybody. Actually, I like you guys have the information. We tried to buy this property for uh to put a mobile home or a family, for my family, actually. But when when we bought this property and and we came out there, they they said it was residential. So we go, yes, we buy this property in this purpose. Because we have a mobile home and we wanna move there. And then to include the property too, because there uh there has to be, there was a lot of a lot of it was being in and we plan to do more. But uh at the end, when we went to what Mr. Mohammed and planning and talking, to give the number to start with the uh utilities. So they find out there was a commercial, so it is when everything changed. And uh actually, it's pretty much.
Any questions from the commission or Mr. Cott?
Do you know exactly where those utilities run that Mr. Mohammed mentioned they run through the property?
Actually, I know the sewer, but the rest. And I think the electrical lines still.
They're probably open.
Any other questions from the commission? So when you what yes, when you bought the property, they didn't tell you that there was a dedicating expense there for your water and sewer, the city water and sewer?
No, they tell me everything was there, but they never tell me that. And also, I guess I asked both of the realtor people. I guess to make sure because we've been, we was trying to find a property like that for a while. So we double check, triple check, we can put a mobile home. Uh at the end, we find that.
So Mr. Cotto, um of course, you're in a tough predicament here. If you uh work with a real estate professional, uh you probably wanna seek some legal advice on how to uh address this issue. Sounds like at this current current time, you bought a piece of property, you're able to do what you had envisioned.
Yeah.
And in in the future, the only place you really can ask is would be the city hall before you make these types of purchases. You yeah, I I know what you did is it sounded like you depended on the information given to you by the realtor and by the other property owner. Uh but they gave you that information. So uh in this case though, the the.
Can I interject over and?
Not right now.
Okay.
Uh now your turn to speak. Now, so right now, um my question to you is again, who made you believe that you could put a mobile home on that?
Actually, you can see in the paperwork.
I actually, yeah, who told you that?
Oh, there was the A B C realtor here in España.
And they told you it was zone residential?
Yes.
So they were around zone as well?
And then I, uh there was two property involved. The other one was called well brokers. So for I asked them is to make sure.
Well, please understand, we don't get involved with legal issues.
Yeah.
And then you and then, okay, are there any other questions for the applicant aside from the commission?
Sorry.
Yes, how long ago did you buy the property?
From?
How long ago?
Last year.
Last year?
About a year.
Steph, any questions of the applicant?
No, I don't have a question, but I think it's probably the applicant was misinformed by the other.
Yeah, that's obvious, sound like that's what happened. Okay, neighboring property owners who received notice, do you have any questions of the applicant?
None from the applicant.
Okay. So now do we have any neighboring property owners who did not receive notice who'd like to question the applicant?
Yeah, no, I I actually I wanted to say that Rio Arriba County has listed it as residential. And it's the city which has listed it as um commercial. And I think this is where probably some of the uh confusion came from.
Oh, okay, so that this the city, of course, has jurisdiction over their zone. So yeah, if it was if it was misreported from the county, that's something that you would have to untangle. But he could still apply, he could still apply for a rezon to get it to residential. So there's a process for that. But you have the issue, Mr. Cotto, of the utilities running right to it. It prevents you from putting a home on top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so again, uh we're not here to defend the realtor or or chastise realtor. That's something for you to take up with your little counsel, whoever. We're here to just listen to the request for variance, okay? So no other questions of the applicant from the mission? Thank you, Mr. Cotto.
Thank you.
All right, so now do we have any property owners who received notice, neighbors who received no notice who'd like to speak?
Sure.
Please state your name and get to the point.
My name is Marvin Valencia. I am a resident at six seven or two West Sanchez Street. Our family has been there for over sixty years.
Okay.
The said utility line that they're talking about that runs straight through the property is an illegal line. I saw it being put in.
Listen, listen, do you need to say it, please?
Okay. The sewage line that runs through this property is an illegal line that was chopped into the city line. And it was done illegally.
Yeah, but you're 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 not saying the city line is illegal, you're saying there's an additional line.
It's from from, okay. Do we have a trip though?
Yes, that's that's this this part of here.
Okay. If you notice, there's a house right here, this um the sixty six, six oh six number right here. Okay, they ran that sewage line down across the way and down to tap into the city line.
Okay.
Okay, but this is what my our concern is for the neighborhood. Since it's so commercial, we would actually like to ask the city to actually um inherit this property and make it a community park, a community garden and park because it's terrace, maybe because it has irrigation. Uh bringing in a mobile double white mobile home, you can treat it, see a picture of the level. Um he indicated in his packet that there were all mobile homes with the exception of one home. And it's it's not that way. There's we're all homes. So I just wanted to know if there was any way that we could, how I present it to the city to acquire this property to do a community garden and possibly a park area.
So at this point, I'm not an attorney, but Mr. Cotto owns the property number one, so he would have a big statement. Uh number two, you have counselors that represent your area and you can talk to them about new types of park potential like between ten and five, okay? At this point, counselors or commissioners, do you have any questions for the neighbor of the proceedings?
I have a question. You said that line that the sewage line is the legal court to get that or to get that explanation?
The po- the owner of the property is my cousin Tommy. The properties on this over here are my other cousins. They were courting twice because of that um issue.
Which property is the one of the six oh six that ran up the sewage line?
Yes, down at the hill.
Can I just space in a little bit real quick to get off on a tangent here? Um Mohammed, if you gather this information, would you choose to report this to the other local departments and investigate? Anything will certainly get out. Any other questions of the neighbor, the student, the commission? Steph, any questions for this nice lady?
No, I don't.
And then the applicant, Mr. Cotto, do you have any questions for this nice lady? Okay, thank you. All right, so um basically the general public, now sir, if you'd like to make a statement or a comment?
No, right, because basically I already said what I already said.
All right, so basically what you said is that the information was partly incorrect because it came from the county stating that property is zone residential, that's what you stated?
Yeah, I would say that and I would say that the real estate agent basically lied. That of course is not anything which concerns you.
Yeah, so well, I I I can say that you carry air to the missions insurance. So again, if you have legal representation, we should I seek some assistance.
We have legal representation. We were told in New Mexico because this is a transaction broker. They're not responsible for any misinformation. So we're we're working on this, but it's a it's a really, uh it it's a very tight uh problem here is because off the way, a transactional broker in New Mexico works, they have no fiduciary of the responsibility.
Yeah, so the the qualified broker will have, so uh but anyway, I don't wanna get off on a tangent.
Yeah, yeah, we don't address that issue here. We're concerned with the variance request, okay?
All right, let's sit here. So no other questions, Cott, so I'm gonna close this session for public comments. And before we entertain a motion, let's entertain a motion.
Mr. Checko, just one more question uh of the planning director. Is there also a water line that runs through there or just the sewer line?
There is one line, but it runs through the through the side of the property.
So the sewer line runs more or less through the middle of the property?
Yes.
And the water line runs to the north of the property also. Okay, and then there's a irrigation ditch on that, right?
Okay.
It crosses the ditch.
Cross?
It crosses the ditch, the water.
Crosses the ditch.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the commission on this request?
I would deny the request based on the fact that there are utilities.
And also it is B one zone?
Well, it'd be one zone and of course his option would be to try and rezonate. But as big as problem of this going to be those utility you know, there's a part of structure on this, so for that reason, I would deny.
Okay, may I include the B one zone? Okay, any second? Yes, same same with Mr. Martinez. And now we'll have discussion. So I guess I would like to just add to start the discussion, so um we have a piece of property that is zone B one commercial. And it would be the first step for Mr. Cotto would be to get that property rezoned and at some point, Mr. Cotto, it seems like there's not gonna be uh anything in the near future for the realignment or redirections utilities. So it would be pretty hard to get a variance to put a mobile home there.
Or any structure.
Or any structure, actually, yeah, because you can't cover those utilities. Um any other discussion on the motion? Public question?
Mr. Chavez?
For the motion.
Mr. Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Correio?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Quinn?
I'm abstaining from the vote.
I'm sorry?
I'm not abstaining.
And Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion was carried.
Mr. Cotto, I'm sorry, uh but again, I think there's some other issues you probably need to address, okay? And uh there's always, of course, uh let me just read this statement to you because I have to. And it's something very important to you to know. So any party wishing to appeal the decision made here tonight must submit a written notice to appeal within fifteen calendar days. I am then you staff can provide you assistance with this if you choose to appeal. If you have any other information requests, Mohammed Hussein, the director, will be more than happy, I'm sure, to answer any questions, give you any guidance, give you any updates on code information and whatnot, okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. At this point, I think folks, I'm gonna call for a five minute break to go to the whatever, get a drink of water. We will return here at the twenty till eight. Helen?
What were you? Do you remember me? Or you? Nice to see you.
Yes, I guess I understand.
Is she? Actually, she's buying all the obviously, they just didn't have all for a wide base.
Yeah.
And I didn't talk.
Well, they would put it there. They didn't have transfers. But the water line is not. I'm just gonna have to.
Yeah.
Where I went before.
I wanna go.
We we want.
How's my?
I admire.
I think I was telling them that.
I know.
But my appointment.
They're like, when the guy I'm hiring. The wife, they call white guys.
So keep on taking. So how long were you gonna be out there in Portland?
Three weeks, three weeks. Also, I'm laying out inside there. And we were on a travel to uh well, that's how to see the cup that Jesus used to take. And I wanna go to Frasco. And then to uh for alcohol was killed in one there before the visitant.
Who is this?
Oh, all right. The little city.
But closer to Germany. All of these buried here?
But what?
At least they can do.
I got pictures of a cousin of mine. He was he was a daily, he captured a German driver. And they they had it at the museum there in Albuquerque, and they just moved it to the Smithsonian. It was it was a it was a a group of uh company. Sure, I'm here from Northern America.
Oh, was that the Martinson uh? Pretty much. There was a pair of the locker, because they had one of ten bucks for it.
Oh, yeah.
And I said, that's it, I think it was Zeus.
Oh, yeah?
Or actually, oh, German.
Oh, yeah?
I got it for two bucks, did I use them?
When I go to the opera, I keep it here. That was the opera.
March twenty seven, I'm on another day.
Okay. You're at this uh.
You know what I've seen in Mexico City?
Yeah. See, this is where they're doing the sewer line for, they're gonna be from there to the Smithsonian. Let me see if I can get a picture of one.
That's a.
You see, this is a signature of all the gentlemen.
Because you're lucky to be last, huh?
In there, we need quickly, that's good though.
Well, our last meeting, the last person that started that.
Two of his sons died in Vietnam.
So you guys are lucky.
Yeah, I can see that a lot are being.
Yep. Same.
Yeah.
That was resting here because I didn't know that these archives until last night.
I think she had like a gristle this thing, but.
Yeah, because it's a public meeting, it has to be recorded.
Yeah.
Hi, guys.
How's it going?
Let's get ready back sitting down a little bit.
Yeah.
Let's be back order at uh seven forty this morning. Okay, so our final case of the night. I want to open the public hearing for, that's this is case number twenty twenty-two dot fourteen. This is a variance request from Santiago Armiño. Advocate is requesting a variance of setbacks for an accessory structure shed. The property is currently addressed at four and four at eighty-seven A, according to city of Beattyville, Alabama. Known as urban residential R six.
In Sir Commission, uh I actually own B and C. A is belongs to an Amor Valerio.
Okay, so you have B and C, so can we make that correction to the record, Mohammed? Thank you, Sam. B and C, okay. Alright, so counselors, is there anyone who has a cognitive interest or that has had expertise communication going into this case? Okay? So we have, of course, the applicant Santiago, um let me swear you in, uh you swear affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth.
I do.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this uh? Thank you.
So uh my neighbors didn't come in, but forty-seven A doesn't mind it. Uh Diego Lopez, my next neighbor, over.
How about we do this when you do your presentation, you can see. Are there any uh neighboring property owners that received notice in which to speak in favor against this? How about any general public which to speak in favor of this? But that's happened, would you please uh make your presentation?
Comfortable chair, if you don't remember my expression. I look at part of you is, the variance request is from Santiago Armiño. The applicant is requesting a variance of setbacks for the accessory structure is checked. Property is currently addressed for each site A. If Calle Del Auto is known as residential district, other residential R six. And this subdivision has a lot size. Well, this just for the first thing for this property, this particular parcel is smaller than even that's more law. This is the smallest law in this subdivision, which is only zero five zero five meter or two thousand one hundred seventy eight square. It is not conforming law because it does not meet the minimum required criteria of seven thousand five hundred fifty for urban residential property space. And the applicant's case is shed. Earlier this year, it was set a letter violation by the Department of Officers that it is not in compliance with the city's designs and standards. And the city code according to clause zero four check of our chapter three fifty recommends the placement of uh the accessory structures should be the required setbacks, which is ten feet from the main structures. And it is car six five feet from the rear and ten feet from sides. Uh these setbacks are recorded for the safety of the being of the community, and according to clause zero four in our development chapter on accessory user structure, it says, and I quote, no accessory building may be located closer to the front line of the property than the main structure or block except as maybe modified by the section eighty-four of this section. After the review, this guy is too close to the road. It obstructs the view. And it takes the parking space, which is for this particular lot of A, because there's the road base not wide enough to park the car. If this parking spot is taken away, you have to park in the street. And the speed is not wide enough for that car, so it obstructs any forward package. The fire truck may not be able to access as well if the car is parked on the street. And with that, I be not like any other issue that we have. And our our planning department's recommendation is for you for this particular case, but I stand for any question that you may have.
Any questions, commission for staff? So uh the director saying, how how do I use that street?
I would say it's about fifty feet.
It's twenty feet.
Fifty, yeah, fifteen to twenty, okay.
So have you have you visited that area?
Yeah, I did.
It's a pretty old area of town, uh heavily congested. Not room for much.
Yes.
Right? Okay, the uh the shed that was placed there uh is on skid, I believe.
Yes, I think I have pictures to be sure.
It is not a uh permanent structure by any means, and it's pretty small, it's what, about seven by seven or anything?
It's a wooden structure.
Yeah, and seven by seven. And is there is there any, as a legal nonconforming law, are there any hardships uh that that we should consider for this request? I mean, it is a small congested area, it's a two thousand square foot lot. Is there a hardship because of the size of the lot? I mean, that whole area is a congested, I don't want to use the term I'm thinking I'm using, but it it's not only his property that creates any issues for firefighters.
That that is correct. Other issue is, and 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 Rob can show you the picture of the the shed as well, how it is placed. It obstructs the view of even the resident coming from and from their house and coming to the door.
Um you guys show us that picture, but any other questions from staff uh or for staff?
So it's inside fence, but.
It's within my property.
It's a different property, it's the door.
It's about two feet, three feet from the edge of the.
And forty-seven B is my lot as well as forty-seven C.
You'll be able to give your presentation, it's short, okay? Just to kind of keep him on the floor tonight. He's showing a picture of the shed, and he'll show that to you.
He keeps calling it A dos, so I need to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, you want to make sure that's we correct the address. Well, we're looking at this picture, any other commission questions of the staff? Not I'm gonna ask then the applicant, do you have any questions of the staff?
Uh none of the staff. I didn't, I'm just always glad to get my comment.
Okay. I I won't solve it today, uh I guess it's a danger, we have to even pass that down. So at this point, thank you, director, we'll keep looking at the picture, and uh Mr. Santiago, the applicant, you're welcome, please stand and state your case.
I do understand, I made a mistake, I gave my permanent origin to it. For the fact that it was a nonpermanent structure, I didn't think it was gonna be an issue given the size. Um my neighbor in a forty-seven, he actually likes it being there because it does give him shade over his walls up for his place off. And he likes the privacy it creates between our yards. All my other neighbors are also okay with it being there. They understand I need the shed to put stuff away, I I am a woodworker. I've been trying to improve my property, and since I've bought in it. Uh one of my next projects, I do want to start with hand stuff, and all that different stuff. But and again, due to these houses being built so old, we have a lack of storage space in the house. So I'm at the point where I'm tripping over stuff because I can't put anything away anymore. So with this shed, it allows me to put the stuff away and allow me to continue working to improve my property and try to up the value. And on a street like mine, it's very important that people start investing in our properties. If not, you know, all the values of the property will go down. And I just think maybe if the city finds a way to try to help people that try to invest in their property instead of bringing them down. And I I do understand all the variance cities and the stuff going on. My road right here in front of the house is twenty feet across, there's plenty of room for emergency vehicles. My shed's about three feet in from the road. And there's no, I never have vehicles parked on the road. I have all this space here that the vehicles park in, and then use the road here for any vehicles car passing through. The ones I do dialogue with is actually this one over here, you can't see it right now, but that one's usually filled with a bunch of cars that the neighbor has in my cousin's yard. But like I said, there's been a room where I had my shed. I didn't need it, I built out of necessity, not out of any other reason. I just hope you guys consider passing it just because it does make a difference for me.
Ask Commissioner.
Uh since it is on uh on slots or whatever, could you possibly move it to another piece of the property, to the other side of the house?
There is nowhere on my property, if I put it anywhere else, it could be found an issue on the road. So where I have it was the one place I could keep it away from the road and allow there enough room for emergency vehicles, so that won't be an issue. Because I did measure out all that just to make sure it wasn't gonna interfere with anyone's property or if a vehicle was passing through, like I said, I did make a mistake by not getting the permission in the first place, and I do apologize for that.
Maybe yes, let's.
Do you have a letter from those neighbors when they came in to mention?
Uh they didn't write me a letter, they they were gonna show up to the first hearing, then after their change of the hearing, I'm not sure if they got the second letter in time.
And there's no other place absolutely you can put that shed?
There's no other place on my piece of property that I could put it, like right over here inside. Here won't.
That's the parking.
On the backside over here belongs to my other neighbor.
Close quarters.
And then, like I said, the only place I could do is right in front of my forty-seven B apartment to where I didn't need that piece for parking because I still have probably another thirty or forty feet to park cars. As it is.
And you could and you couldn't move it to C.
Oh, C would be, because I have the patio that comes out of the edge here. And then there's a fence that goes along the side from my dogs. And if I would put it by the fence, the shed would be right on the road. Like I said, where I have it was a place I could tuck it furthest away from the road, and then I tried to space it from the house as much as I could as well, so it wouldn't be too close to the dwelling. I just try to split the difference between what I have between my house and the street.
Yes.
Sure you had mentioned, uh well, how many vehicles do you have where the rental pass?
The rental?
Yeah.
I don't have it.
Or or being your senior mention.
I don't, I mean, I have two vehicles, and I park um pretty much one comes right here alongside of the patio, and then one of the other one I park in front of the patio. Then I still have room with my shed to park another two vehicles on my property, not being on the street.
Any other questions for any other commissioners? So Santiago, when you park your vehicles in, you park inside the yellow boundary on your property, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason why you built that shed was because you need to improve your life, and you have a small piece of property, small house, it's only two thousand square feet, you need a place to put your belongings.
And even my house is, inside my house is far closer to six fifty, six seventy-five square feet. Very small closets, like I even had to make a little extra closet in my bedroom, just so that I have enough room to kind of hide stuff, because it's an enclosed closet and tiny stuff. But I've done what I could with what I have so far, and I do think you need to want to improve my home more.
Do you feel you're uh creating any congestion above the others already there from the other neighbors, right here, and now that street many times, and it's heavily congested just because of the nature of the street?
Yeah, but that one street, they're all because of this one little apartment right here. Her son is the one that the cops are constantly there. He has vehicles in my cousin's yard, he has vehicles parked in the street. And no one ever does.
That's the guy who carried the motorcycle, it's just that.
Yeah, and that's all, that's not even in what they're renting, what they're renting is this little the house and that one space in front of the this half of the apartment, and yet he thought it's okay to take over all of that. And he has vehicles on the street all the time, busting down vehicles.
Okay, any other questions, any questions? Uh any questions for neighborhood properties, or someone else is here, so I'm just gonna skip that portion, okay? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you for hearing, folks.
Alright, let's see. So at this point, I'll pose the session for public comments. And I will entertain a motion from the commissioners. And I guess the only thing I would, uh maybe let me ask a couple of questions of our staff before we go into that question. So uh for the staff, uh Mr. Santiago Armiño is under the understanding that he would have to get a permit to place a shed. And I'm not familiar with any permits the city requires for temporary sheds, and you can buy one of those and put it up on your property without a permit.
The city require.
You know, require permit for every shed, and that is gonna be now enforced because I I see people bring in twenty foot shipping containers, even forty foot shipping containers, I see them buy sheds right and left, putting their sheds in their their house, so we are gonna get it now, try and enforce.
That is correct.
And what is it, what's the permit fee for that?
Seventy-five dollars.
So we charge seventy-five dollars to put up a garden shed, except myself. That's that's good news for us, no, because I didn't, wasn't aware of that.
Yes, that's, and and to to counter that, please, uh I think it was March, when they sent a letter state investor, any shed accessory structure, she take it from my hand, it was every few of his kills, every almost every red.
So I got a question, I just said that on your list, like that haven't heard of it here. Uh when when did you notice uh that this shed was was there before or prior to the better of March twenty twenty?
It was in March, I can't recall the exact date, but our our Department of Officers was trolling, and they didn't notice that there is shed.
So it's been there for a while with.
They built it back in December. So if it if it was in pass for March, that law was passed after my shed was built, correct?
No, that law was already passed years ago.
Oh, it was passed years ago, when you said March, I was thinking March when the letter went out.
We noticed this in March.
Yeah, okay, I just clarified, thank you.
I was just reminding people, you can't put up a shed without seventy-five dollar permit.
Do I have a a motion from the commission on whether to approve or decline this request?
Take a motion to approve.
To approve the request, you have a second?
But I I need to, what is your motion, based based on to deny the request?
To approve it.
To approve his shed, yeah. To approve his shed, yeah.
Approve the shift, okay. Since I can vote, I can also second motion or second motion. And now for discussion.
Off to the questions.
Well, I, I just want to say a few things since we're in discussion. We have areas of the city that are challenging. And I think that this is one of those challenging areas. I don't believe that what Mr. Armio did is challenging that area anymore. I think it's doing something that he, um, I will have to admit that I didn't know of the shed permit. But I see them going up everywhere all over town. And I need to learn more about that part of the code. I'm, I'm gonna apologize for that. Because if someone comes and they don't have the sh- permit to put up a shed in my backyard outside the house, it's just a shed. So maybe that's part of the ordinance that maybe someday we will revisit as a permission. Uh, and maybe we'll have to write that down for our workshop meetings. Because some of these things I think we need to address.
Okay, I have a comment.
Yes.
So who would be responsible? Would the, the city be responsible if a fire truck could not get through there or the neighboring home because of congested area?
Well, we allow that development to exist with less than, with they want twenty five foot road that's already at twenty. His congestion's off the road. He's not on the road. He's, he's in his property.
I know it's very congested with a lot of vehicles on the road in your.
Oh, yeah. So you know, I guess if you want to crack down on that, that would be public safety with crack down on.
You know, I make a, make a comment to that. I can hear you for what you're saying.
Part of the discussion.
You know, those recommended when we first came here, if you have a chance, go visit the areas to, you know, uh, for these places or these requests will be made. I did go do that myself. I went out there. I'm in very difficult to make a turn.
Sure.
And you know, if, but what happens is you know, our fire truck or an ambulance trying to provide a service, if they, they cannot make those, if I can make it in my small car, how difficult would it be for a fire truck or, or an ambulance to serve you?
Very difficult.
So damn emergency.
But it's that.
But, but is that because of, is that because of?
You know, or I'm sorry, Santiago, we're already past the pause here. But this opening, that class is all open.
Is that because of the shed or because of the street uh, cars?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, they're sending, they're sending a notice to, to him about yes, there's other areas like he was describing about his neighbor having a ton of vehicles in front of his house. You know, that, that was a concern for me, but that's not what we're addressing now.
Right.
We're addressing us yet that, you know, so some, you know, there's a whole issue on that street.
Correct. Well, but it's, it's the way things were approved at the time.
Exactly.
You've been around many years JD. That particular street, it appears to have been there since the, what, thirties, twenties, nineteen ten, eighteen seventies? I mean, it, it's been there for a long time. And I, and I guess what I'm saying is just like on the west side of North Coronado, all these streets up here, we will allow certain parts of our city to develop that way. And to change it, uh, city has a part of them. That's not four, like I don't think the one two. And in his particular shed, and when I go down, that was really the only part of the road that I did have access to my superment uh, to drive through. And yeah, fire trucks would have an issue in a lot of our streets. It's not because of the shed. It's because we allow development of a certain type. And that's where, well, I said, hey, the city has a problem with narrow streets, buy a skinnier fire truck. You're not gonna take the ladder truck out there. You might have to fight the parallel rush truck. I don't know.
I just determined.
Yes.
Play the order. There's a motion, the one that's been seconded?
Well, we have discussion. That's why we have the motions. We have a motion and a second.
Well, we have discussed it all night. We all know what the situation is. I suggest that we move on and follow up.
Okay. Off to the question.
Commissioner Chavez? For the motion. Mr. Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Gravillo?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
On the string.
Mr. Gray?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion must get.
Thank you.
So you have a shed. Now, I guess uh, the, uh, the process of the permit, I want to give back to you to decide how that works. If you guys pay a permit fee for the shed.
Apply for a permit. Then if I'm paying for a permit and you're paying for a mine, that's fine as law.
No, they don't need to pay a permit now. Okay.
So you have to.
It's been in the paper. It's been in the paper. The city reminding, the city reminding people that they need a permit to put up a shed, even if they're not on the car shed. It's been in the paper.
So I'm gonna close this public hearing and then uh, we are done with our public hearings. We're closing for ten, for left team.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate you all in here.
Good night.
Good night.
Keep those cards out.
Thank you. You okay?
Let's uh, let's move to this real quick, Tab, so.
Okay, very good there. Okay, well, thank you. Sorry to share.
So, okay, you can do it.
No, okay. Like I said, I'm gonna continue trying to do what I can because it'd be nice to see that street get a little nicer.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So next on agenda is approval of minutes for May fourteen, twenty twenty two. Our motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So um, I guess I should just uh, correct, this is gonna be back up early. I know we made a motion, but Mohammed, there are some things in the minutes that probably you correctly, we spoke about. Did you correct those where you, it says in the motion, were you objected to uh, the uh, Martenio of the.
Yes.
You corrected that in minutes? Did you present the corrected minutes to?
To be amended online.
So he, uh, can you explain the correction on the minutes? So they're willing to put these minutes?
Yes, so. Or, or maybe he could make a motion to be corrected that is not long as Martenio has stopped recommended approvals by the.
Did you amend your motion to approve what the amendments, what he did is correct his position in the minutes. He was not against the request.
Correct.
He made a, he was, he was in favor of the request. Now, a very second motion.
Yeah, exactly.
A very second again now.
But you know, the, the pages of these minutes on the phone, that that would be helpful in case of directors, so on future, on future.
So you have a call for the question? I'll call the question.
Commissioner Chavez?
For the motion.
Mr. Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Gravillo?
For the motion.
Commissioner Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Gray?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion was carried.
And next is the whole business. So the uh, meeting, the meeting approval of final decisions, there are also some corrections that need to be made in the final decision. Uh, can you uh, tell us about those amendments? I didn't see again. I got that, I guess I almost had a really late date. And final decisions correcting.
Yeah, that was the same, but I think uh, it was it was tapped, but it could may have approved or rather than denied. So it was fixed.
That was in regards to the.
That's made number six.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the uh, final decisions? Can I entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Are we approving all of them or one at a time?
Well, you know what? That's a good question. I'm sorry. My, my mistake.
Motion to approve final decision for
twenty twenty.
Lawrence Martinez.
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two dash four.
Yes.
Okay.
We have to roll call. We do all the paperwork, right?
We, we need a second for that. Second. Commissioner Chavez?
For the motion.
Mr. Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Gravillo?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Gray?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion was carried.
Hey, just backside pages.
I'm trying to see.
So we also.
We could number some of these, you know.
Any discussion on the case twenty twenty two dash five on the final decision? Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Martinez? Mr. Chavez?
For the motion.
Mr. Gravillo?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Commissioner Gray?
I'm sorry, but I have a question because this one says it's hereby approved, recommended, recommended to city council. We didn't approve it.
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
That was five two or six.
Dash five, that was Mr. Scormant.
That was twenty. Well. That was one of the, that was one of the, did you amend that? Have we discussed?
Yeah, not discussed that. I, I think that was the denied, recommended to, to city council.
Yeah, but it says it's hereby approved and recommended to city council for final. So we denied the.
Can you put up those uh?
We denied the rezoning.
Yeah, we denied the rezoning.
The, the decisions? Here.
Why did you say that just?
Well, they actually were copy because I picked up the copy this morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
That is number.
Twenty twenty two dash five.
Twenty twenty five, yeah.
Goodbye approved.
That's by denied. And that's, that's the latter one there.
Well, that's a big title.
Yes.
We were gonna.
So you can, no, you, you can make a motion with the, with the amendment.
Okay, I make a motion to amend the document twenty twenty two dash five, final decision. To show denied.
You able to make that amendment now?
Yes, that's already made. It's already made.
So you have a second to amend that and you have that despite decision?
I just have a question. I want to make sure that I understand this. So the language is gonna be changed where it says hereby approved to hereby denied?
Yes.
Yeah, recommended from the city council for approval. That's what your amendment is, right?
Yes, because the, what is it, during denied, should say hereby denied.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
If I second her, I'm gonna get motion.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Chavez? Commissioner Martinez? So. Commissioner Gravillo?
Yeah, we need to change that and.
Commissioner Gray?
For the motion.
Commissioner Salazar?
Uh. Approved.
Commissioner Borrego?
For the motion.
Hello, radio twenty twenty two dash six, please. I have your motion to approve this uh, decision.
I got some uh, comments on this. Okay, okay. Uh, where it says uh, commission call for a point of order. Ask them then to you. Just trying to persuade them and then following paragraph says uh, territory you stated.
Those are the minutes. Where they put the finance.
Okay, but the, if the, going on the final decision, saying that we could not approve it, but I have a concern on the language in there. Saying that, you know, that was based on a personal, personal view. I did not make the, my decision based on a personal view.
Does it say that and I change that?
No.
No, that, that's part of minutes. I think that's fine, so. So a motion to approve the final decision?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
It's a motion to approve that.
Final decision.
No, it's. Approve that it's denied.
Decision.
Oh, approve that.
This is kind of a new process to be to us. So apparently when we have a meeting and we make, we rule, we make a decision. Then at the next meeting, we have to confirm that decision. And thank God we're doing it because we just found a pretty big error. They're telling Starman vehicles approved. So thank God that we're going through this process. So, so right now on this particular issue, our decision was to deny because of three, three votes. So it's likely that it was denied. So we need a motion to uh, to approve that that's the decision we made, just to confirm it. And if you can second it, then we will.
Okay, I'll second it.
Commissioner Martinez?
For the motion.
Commissioner Chavez?
For the.
Commissioner Gravillo?
Uh, yes, motion.
For the motion. Commissioner Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Gray?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion was passed.
And with, that was, that was the dash six, correct?
Yes.
So now we call twenty twenty two dash seven, please. Okay. That's all right. Let's just move on. Can you go down to the decision? So that in final meeting, I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve final decision in case number twenty twenty two dash seven.
Second. Wait, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
For the motion.
Mr. Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Gravillo?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Gray?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That was carried.
Next was case twenty twenty two dash eight. Would you please pick that one up? Okay, we go down to the decision, please.
This is the one where uh, they were trying to do, well, do two dwellings on the property, but one of them had to be fifty percent, fifty percent of the other, right?
Yeah.
So there were some conditions of the proof.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, and I think she, I think they were gonna apply for rezoning.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or to divide, I think you had written this, to divide a property.
Divide one.
Right.
They can do that. Okay, so do I have a motion to move the final decision?
Open to a motion.
Okay, second, second. My vote please, Mohammed.
Mr. Chavez?
For the motion.
Mr. Martinez?
For the motion.
Mr. Gravillo?
For the motion.
Mr. Salazar?
For the motion.
Mr. Gray?
For the motion.
Mr. Borrego?
For the motion.
That motion was carried.
So manage from the staff, you have any thing you want to speak about?
Okay, just wanted, I don't have anything in particular. But we, we are working house with certain changes, especially in specifically or subdivision ordinance. And I just wanted to say if there is anything that you come across in terms of some of your ordinance, you want to discuss that. Uh, I, I would be happy to give you or discuss anytime next week or the following week. Or if you have anything that you want to address, you can send an email. So we have that. Well, for, we take it. Thank you, Commissioner.
And, and if we do send an email, do we address it to the whole commission or just to yourself?
It was directly, otherwise it's ex parte.
That's right. That's what I'm trying to.
Anything else from staff? Matter, any comments from the commissioners from this?
Yes, I do. Um, I would like to say that thank you for giving me the packet this morning. However, I have requested it three times through email and I've never received. Um, I would like to say that thank you for giving me the packet this morning, however, I have requested it three times through email and I've never received it. Um, Mister Trillo also um requested that I receive it three email and never received it, so um, you know, if we could just I looked through my junk, I waited and waited that day and you said that they were gonna send it. I never got it.
Do you have my email address?
Did you send me the email this morning?
Yes.
Yeah.
That I'll obviously want. I'm sorry about that, I didn't.
Um, I I received the I get all the Zoom notices, but I don't I don't ever receive the I did receive it this morning, the the one that you sent this morning, but um, yeah, so if we could just have a little more communication about when we're gonna get the packets and how we're gonna get the packets.
Certainly it's the Friday before, but since we're using the old packets that
Yeah.
last time. But it's a Friday of the week before.
So next Friday, we'll get a new packet, get a mailbox.
Yeah, I'll I'll print them and put them in the mailbox. And then um and then it's hosted on in the uh on the city website, you know, under a, you know, agenda and minutes, and then you can go on and click on that.
So it's not under planning zoning or planning commission, because I looked everywhere yesterday for it.
No. No, and then the email I sent today, it kind of gives like a a transition.
I s- I I saw the one today, but I spent like an hour looking for it last night. And I was like, it's gotta be here, because it's not in the planning and zoning and planning and planning commission, it's not in that section.
I apologize for this this all misunderstanding, but
the agenda and minutes.
So I can go to the city website, because there there is on on your extreme left, it's an agenda and minutes.
Yeah.
And you click at the planning commission meeting, it says everything. So one of the problem that we face that we don't use the word three sixty, we don't have an access to OneDrive. That the because this is a big document.
Yeah.
Send an email, the offer only allows you to send to your fight.
Right.
And this is more than forty five minutes, so probably sometimes it doesn't go through because of that. That and it's bounce it back, sometimes somebody doesn't, so maybe that we might have enough notice back.
When I looked in there under the minutes, the only minutes that were in there were from February twenty twenty two. That was all that was in there were the minutes.
Minutes in.
Well, planning uh planning and zoning section, planning commission section, those are the only minutes that were there, February twenty twenty two.
I'm not for sure why it's not showing that, because the.
Can you can you invest any time to get back to.
Yeah, I mean, I I looked everywhere, I could not find the whole.
Sure.
Okay.
So.
Any other.
Just for future, you know, we can just.
Any other comments just.
So here on those screen on the big screen.
There was a request from uh commissioner.
Yes, I didn't I didn't go there because it was under mayor, I thought it was just city council.
No, so still our.
So.
Agenda and minutes.
Yeah. I I went directly to the uh planning zoning.
You can see our meeting is right here.
Okay.
And then to the right side, you can.
It it popped up a while.
Yeah.
Popped up on the screen, I gotta check it out. So open up in here.
Yeah.
And then this is your agenda items file, so go through and these are the case applications.
Okay, fine.
Down here is the May fourteenth meeting minutes. And then there's our uh whole business.
Those have been corrected to the.
I didn't obviously did not look in there, because I thought that was just city council.
And then the agendas over here.
Yeah, okay. Great.
What other comments?
Okay, just there was a comment maker by commissioner cheese of on the old business, you know, this thing uh it it approved or disapproved to put a description in there on the sign.
So was it the final decision he?
Well, it wasn't the final, it took you let us know which one it was like, like the first one was uh George Martinez.
Yeah, put the name.
Right, and instead of just uh.
Yeah, I think it's.
Right, and that's what she she had requested we done, I think she had she mentioned that, you know, last.
Yeah, but we can profit.
Of the applicants named by the
Right.
number of case.
And then if you could also, you know, minutes with case numbers that were, you could go on there. And you could put me to a name.
Mister Chavez.
Uh, just to move the minor things, could we get a a wood pointer for these individuals that stand up there and they wanna kind of point to the property and where it is.
A laser pointer, yeah.
Rather than trying to point.
You can use this.
How much water?
Yeah, that the other one.
Yeah, something like that, have them exist that or a wooden pointer, whatever.
I think this is better because wood would reflect.
The wood one will poke a hole through.
And then second of all, did you ever follow up on uh Peter Valdez's uh checks um neighborhood memory area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, what do you find?
Uh, I've been there twice, I had conversation with Mister Valdez twice. And what I'm looking at at this currently, we wanted to talk to that person as a resident of so what we have to both perspective. We couldn't get a hold of them, we have sent them a letter stating that this issue is going on. We haven't talked, you you haven't got back anything yet, I sent them a second letter, I don't know if you've done anything, okay guys.
Where does this sound from?
It sounds very strange, yes.
Yes. Just their internal first whoever, or they're here, I think they they got it.
Okay.
Okay, so then they didn't respond, what's next?
Second letter.
And that they don't respond?
That we can take, take any action, appropriate action, because the thing is, the survey that property that we have the for the subdivision is very normal, it's typical three that we have from the county. It did it it does say that it is twenty feet, but we have to go there and measure. And it's at some point, I mean, I see that if there is a weak line uh it seems like there is a there is a sidewalk on the other side where that person is, and we have a problem with that property, but I don't know if it's that I couldn't find out that house for the pool, he has been likely approached the fence line. It doesn't need any setback requirements, it's like two feet from the the fence line. This, if if I say it is all the way down, because he's probably covering the sidewalk.
We can get in touch also with Peter Valdez to explain that.
Yes. I had conversation with him twice. I went to the property and I was there looking at the property, and I I talked to him in 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 development department as well.
So you you were not able to determine if it was actually approaching on the public right away, or it is, it isn't, or is?
It it could be, I I I were searching if we could find a better survey of that property.
Is it a nuisance as far as the the things he has there?
Particularly not, it's just only plants.
Mister Martinez, any comments? So let me just add a few things, uh, what Mohammed mentioned earlier is we have been working under the direction of the mayor on uh creating some submit subdivision regulations that will make our community friendier to building homes. And bringing in homes. So we are in the process now of uh actually identifying two types of subdivisions. One will be a small subdivision where someone with an R six zoning, one acre tract of land could do up to five homes. They have to have city utilities or city conditions, or hoping to create a process where there's less regulations, like hill curve gutter and sidewalks. They do have to have city utilities, of course, the road has to be passable, packed gravel or something. That'll be where we can take the person that owns that property and allow them to do something with that property, like bring housing to us to be able, that's number one. Number two, we're entertaining some larger developers now, like Cadillac Homes, Home Lines, for example. They are seeking projects in our area, so we're gonna be reviewing that subdivision ordinance to see how we can again uh make it more user friendly to the developer, to hopefully incite these homeowners to our area. Anything that we come up with, we will review at our workshop meetings. And we will listen to discussion, make changes and whatnot, because eventually we would present that to council for adoption or approval. So, yes.
Wouldn't it be wise of PR to have them paid and have sidewalks keep besting how beautifying the neighborhoods that we are then develop rather than no sidewalks, just dirt roads?
Well, you know, Ross, uh, dirt roads is not a Henry's when you look at how things are done to make it in a beautiful way, you know, like Saffy has a lot of gravel roads, I mean and a lot of roads that are are nice groomed, uh, not necessarily paved. The thing the thing we're trying to do is to make it where it's affordable for people to develop their land. And you know how much paving can cost, curve gutter.
Right, it is so much for the valley, you know, commercial, there's some commercial buildings there on Riverside that aren't paved. They shouldn't be paved, you know, but anyway, that's nice.
Well, those are commercial properties, we're talking about how home sites. And, you know, I encourage you to, you know, drive around some of these areas like Rio Grande Boulevard and Albuquerque, and, you know, some of these places off of the in the in the local districts down there, you know, but they're they're very trendy places without paint. But we are looking at all this, and again, we'll bring it up to everybody for the session, we're not doing, we can kind of any cart mark.
Yeah.
Commission can be included, we're not giving you a ball rolling at the direction there. We have something going, or we can have something to look at, work on, and we'll.
Whatever is there to look at?
No, we're looking at R R six, uh.
But I mean, give me a specific. On the east side, the west side.
Where wherever R six is, Joe, and R six is all over the city. And they have to be in parcels of one acre or more, so you you know, a lot of times you have an R six zone, that's a a good example, um, River Avenue, one of my houses. That's an R six zoning district, but it we have one acre parcels. So conceivably, they're built out now, but conceivably, there were vacant, so we could say, hey, coming for one of these smaller subdivisions, and in the requirement to send a five hundred square foot lots, they go below that, say, my homes. And you know, based off the size of homes, but they want to bring some housing into the area, and do some some input.
I'm just bringing up that thing, because on the last inch of the street, there were some problems in the Santa Cruz area. That's what I'm asking, you know, where where is the looking at? Are we gonna have the same issue than for Santa Cruz?
You know, I don't have that good issue, it's active, but there is a hope to develop, I mean, thirty apps in there. And, you know, and of course, the thing too is that land is is a pretty at a premium, so if, you know, a lot of times, uh, you know, people are used to having seventy five hundred square foot lots, that's extreme size for a city. I mean, it really is, you know, most cities are operating at five or five hundred square foot, thirty five hundred square foot, town home developments, sold to places. So it just depends, and there's always gonna be public input. So on on a developer like that, when you're going into uh building thirty units on a two acre piece, you'll have the community able to voice their opinions, they'll come before the commission, they'll go before city council. Uh, so there's a lot of of opportunity there to voice their their opinions and concerns. But Mohammed, in regards to uh these minutes of this documentation, we need to get this right. I find myself very frustrated when I see erroneous information. It's not stating the proper zoning, because I was saying the proper decision. We're not getting it in a timely fashion, I know the packets are real good, but then the final decision is tripped later, and then we don't see your staff, of course, maybe a little bit later. I really like to see this come together where we can try to do this stuff in a, you know, precise, complete package.
So what happened that we're changing actually to discuss this, so we have the DRTU meeting that was scheduled were on Wednesday, and we have to deliver everything, because I can't write and hold the hold everything they said, or listen to them. So we have one day only to write all those things. So what we have done now, the first of the year, the meeting, the prior.
Good, that's a suggestion.
So really prior, so this is all we taking care in that time.
I think I sense the frustration with all of us on mission, you know, trying to get this information so we can view it. And and I don't I don't like to not have the time to view it directly.
Sure, that's.
Yeah.
And and then we apologize for that and make sure that it's it's been on time and received it.
Another thing, this 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 technology that we're using, um, we need a you 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 this is your job to get this stuff set up. We need to have it ready to go, we're not trying to connect everything at six o'clock. Uh, it puts a lot of strain on everybody, it makes us look kind of foolish in front of the public. And I wish there would be a process where we're tired out, you know how it works, we get it to work. Okay, things are charged, things are ready to go, um.
If I can speak to that for tonight, uh it was out of my control, the the YouTube video dropped off after I started recording, I wasn't able to post it live. I had everything running before the meeting, and then YouTube crashed and then wouldn't allow me to to continue to stream the video, and I second tried, it's very stressful and frustrating to try to do that
It is.
with feeling pressure, so what I'm gonna have to do tonight is grab our Zoom meeting that I downloaded first back up to the computer and then upload it on to YouTube site. But it was just, I'm just explaining, like, I did, I don't know what was happening, usually I just runs okay, but it it the YouTube crashed and then it just it kind of frazzled me because I couldn't get it back up.
So so let's get a process, maybe you can meet with the city manager and say, look, these are the issues we're having, this is now two meetings in a row. They're having, I don't know, they're having similar problems at the city council, we're not, if not, we should find out what they're doing differently. Maybe we can have a contingency where if we can't get it up on YouTube, and you know, all we worry about is number one, it's recorded, right? And it's being uh put on some platform. I don't know, I don't know if they list every single uh online platform that we have to be on or not, I mean, but it would be nice to have this stuff ready to go. So we don't always look like we're fumbling and bumbling, because not only do you get sidetracked, it gets me sidetracked too. I don't know what the hell we do, you know.
Don't you have any any IT person for the city that can assist and help with that?
So. He's the IT guy.
Well, no.
I'm not IT, my for planning zoning, but I.
Yeah, I do.
I'm acting as as an IT and planner and the guy has something.
So so Zoom is weird, and it and it depends on who comes into the meeting and the microphone issue, so that was a Zoom issue, that wasn't a IT issue. Um, and I know from experience that you have to just mute everybody, but you can't do that because that computer has to stay on, so I mean, Zoom, using Zoom is a little more difficult than.
I run into technical issues when I when I'm required to get both uh Zoom and YouTube up.
So why do we have Zoom?
So why do you have to have YouTube?
Because I've been told
I didn't.
to do that.
So.
It's in it's in our package.
Now, let's confirm, let's confirm with the city manager what is required.
Yeah, this is like the instructions that they gave us.
So. This is the structure that we give, we give it.
Could we change the platform from Zoom to something else?
We could potentially do that.
Google Meet, Teams, any of those.
Have it less privacy with the Google.
Well, Teams, you can set it up specifically, like Zoom, there's privacy.
Zoom actually does really well, I have I have trouble more with YouTube.
Yeah, I guess my my biggest concern with us not having this time in is he's noticed tonight, he had some people that came to speak and his behalf. Roll that to remind me, I have people that spoke behalf of the other individual. People are not gonna keep coming back and forth because we can't get our technical crap together. So I I just want to encourage you to remedy this, and if there's no remedy, then give it to the city manager, say, hey, we can't do this. You guys are requiring us to do these Zoom meetings and all this stuff, and we're we're turning away the constituency and pissing off and 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 damaging uh an individual's ability to present their case.
I I agree with you, and 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 for chair and member of the commission. This has been continuous process, the problem that we had when we were in the meeting chamber itself. This is the similar problems were faced by the city council itself. Or I think council chambers. And it depends, because the AD equipment that we have, now it's been put up both by the city council and the reason is that how it's been set up uh to publish on YouTube as well as steam live, that's the the primary purpose of setting up this system and the max here in the planning commission as well as in the city council.
Well, I don't I don't understand everything about it, the uh, you know, world of the internet. And I don't have a problem participating in it, but it needs to work. And, you know, I, so if you could please figure something out there to how we can get this to work without having all these it's been two meetings in a row, I hope it's not gonna be the third meeting next time. We need to figure out how to stop this, because it is it is frustrating and it is kind of embarrassing, just to like.
To be to be very frank, it is, if you try our best so that it's it does not repeat itself, sometimes you don't have a hold on the package. I'm sorry. Uh, Mister Mohammed, can can we make an appointment with you, Mohammed, please?
Yes. I I I did get in here uh thirty minutes early and I had them both set up and functioning, and then YouTube just went out on me and I could not bring it and zoom back off, so I do apologize, but I got in early and it was running until it wasn't.
I I don't I don't think it's your fault, that's why I'm telling Mohammed, he's the city manager, explains where what's happening, so she can
Yeah.
direct the ground to the mayor, what we might consider if there's any change.
I also requested our IT to provide backup, so if we lose internet, we can still, we still got cameras, we still have microphones, we should still be able to get a recording even if Zoom and YouTube are down, so that was my request, I didn't get a response uh by the time of the meeting today. Um, also, I was talking to Mohammed, maybe we can get a handheld tape recorder, because that's what Richard was saying, and then. Um also, uh I was talking to Mohammed, like we can get a handheld tape recorder because that's what Richard was doing initially and he would transcribe that from the tape recorder, but we could also take that and then send that out to the girl that does the tests. So.
Okay.
Um.
Well, we need to do something, right?
Just have some.
Some uh strategy.
Or or even get a, you know, a little camcorder.
That that we can do that.
San Diego.
We can use our phone for the recording. The recorder is if it isn't, it records everything.
As long as we as long as we beat those meetings act and and the what the rules are that they decided, that's fine.
Yeah.
And the only last thing for the meeting is uh I told you last, you know, the.
Oh, we still have staff on staff or we don't need to commission?
What?
Well, you're you were having staff. In the last part of the the agenda. Um we got high in the channel or.
No, we're already we're already we're already in nine eleven match.
Okay, because I got some stuff to bring on my eleven also.
Oh, I just asked you.
Okay, no, no. It's I I thought you're still doing.
Oh, yeah, I thought we went around the horn.
Okay, uh one of the issues that, you know, I might, you know, first of all, what's going on, we have recommendations given by the different departments like whether we the the street, waterworks, sewer stuff and it it pretty much it's like if somebody writes something down, a mimic that. And you know, my real my my real concern is, you know, especially with fire and and safety, the police thing, you know, uh Commissioner Chavez and myself, like to go visit, like, yeah, we brought up a safety issue and I know it's not something that's addressed in the in the cannabis thing, but I'd like to uh maybe maybe we need to make some recommendation changes up there um on that one issue. But you know, we need some more information from these people that saying all they did in that one issue was they need a sewer meter and they need a wire meter and they all wrote the same thing. And like they didn't address, you know, how many the where the church was or or what was next door that could possibly be an issue. You know, I I you know, it really concerns me that we the person that was doing the presentation didn't even provide us with a safety, the safety issue. So it's like, yeah, we got it, don't worry. But you know, it concerns me. You've been to have people, whether it's themselves or or uh employees that can put it in a precarious situation. I understand that's not what we're not supposed to. They called it a personal issue. It was not a personal issue.
Well, it the the Mohammed, then I'm gonna also, you wanna speak first and answer those questions.
Mister Chair and and member of the planning commission. Uh Commissioner Sosa. Uh when it comes to the business and resident and business districts and we go to operate the business, if there was no church they were not here. They don't have to come here.
They'd be open for business.
They'll be open for business.
Just like the other lizard.
So the only issue that need to be addressed was the closest proximity church. That was that's the question. What goes next door, what goes next? That's not problem at this one. When they come back, if this approved, they come back and present us with their safety plan, with their fire prevention plan with their with their license. That's when we will analyze it. If there is anything needs to be treated for the fire department, if there is an additional safety standard that we have to address. If they're not even allowed, there is not no point of reading the safety plan or fire plan discussed at all.
Okay, can I interject here? Okay, you say we should uh put our thoughts into what happened. But it wasn't until afterwards that we were given a training about this issue.
Right.
It didn't happen before this issue came up. So in ignorance to my heart, because it wasn't presented by either yourself or whoever the powers may be or the chair. The chair wasn't even aware of this. It it was after that meeting that we we had a presentation done by the attorney. We came in here, that's when we found out what we could do or could not do. You know, when that when I brought up the issue, I think it was it wasn't only myself. It was a couple of other commissioners brought their own issues up. They weren't aware of uh of what was we were supposed to be addressing or not addressing, okay? So you know, I think, you know, in defense of ourselves we were ignorant, okay? But we were not given the opportunity to say, this is what you should be doing and should not be doing.
Sure.
I took it all, so. That'll be done real quick. In defense of ourselves, I'm just saying before anything like this, a commission, I hope they do it with a new commission. This is what you're supposed to be addressing and providing the training prior to becoming a problem.
So just to let you know, okay, I I wasn't I wasn't chair then. I made that suggestion to the light bill before any committee meets, they have a meeting, okay? Didn't happen. So I that's bad. The thing that that we that we addressed the first meeting was the perfect story. We had a tremendous amount of cases from that log of no meetings for two months. That was a strike against it, right? Everybody here, I can say, went out to do their best effort and what their best idea was. And some of it was a little off, but we still did it. And congratulations to all of us. We have, after that meeting, we said, hey, Mohammed, now we need to have this training. You know, I wish you could have it before. We need to get legal in here and just talk to everybody. I don't know about expert taking new case. I don't know about going together, discussing these things, you know, together. Because these are things that a lot of people make mistakes doing and we brought it out and now we're not doing it anymore.
Yeah, well, my issue is that that not only happened, okay, that, okay, I I personally made a mistake. I'll admit my mistake, okay? I wasn't trained before, but the part that really gets me, uh Mr. Chair, is that it went out to the media. It went out to the media and you made statements saying that it was a first, that I made a personal decision. That is not true.
Well.
And that bothered that bothers me before before things. So I feel it. Let me finish.
Well, I I understand. I feel it.
I feel insulted, personally insulted, that you said that, you know, based on a personal issue, that is not a.
Well. That that is a comment that was taken by the person in the room. When we're on the.
Where's on the lids in our minutes?
When we have a reporter here, they report whatever you say.
Yeah.
Okay, and I said.
But it was even the lids in our minutes too.
Short in the minutes because everything that is stated, I stated that.
Right.
I stated that because what I was trying to convey to you folks, because you need a training is it be cautious on what you're voting on. I was not trying to, I was accused of trying to get you to change your vote. That wasn't the intention. The intention was to tell you, we're supposed to be, we're we're supposed to be looking at the issue at hand and what's governing that issue. The only thing that was governing that issue was the distance from that church. Okay, and we had a letter from the church saying, don't bother with us. Okay, so when you start bringing in other issues, that's why I told you, hey, rethink about this. Because it's gonna be appealed. They're gonna probably overturn us because they should. We made a bad decision to deny that. Okay?
I I think also, you know, we don't want our reputation to be tarnished in the in the media or anything else like that. And in the course, you know, we weren't trained. But we have to be careful. We have to be really careful and and stick together as as a team, of course, and you know, we're as a group.
As a group.
And of course, you know, just I didn't think you tried to change our decision. You know, it sounded like.
No, I tried to notify you what the decision is supposed to be about was.
After after we had re-approved, you know.
Well, yeah, and you know what? Again, the motion was already made. The decision that we made, in my opinion, was not the right decision. It's a three three vote. Now it'll be decided by a higher body. Just like you have your point of view, I have my point of view. I don't see any problem with with it with this person trying to open the business. We don't care. Asking her questions about what the other tenants are, that's none of her damn business. The whoever owns that building is gonna rent to whoever they wanna rent to. She has no control over that, nor should she be held accountable for that.
Well.
During the meeting also, we brought up false information that there was a Taekwondo or some kind of a karate studio in there. That was totally false.
No, it's not. Well, it was not false.
It was false.
Well, they weren't open there.
They were they were probably.
And then.
I called the the business owner in today.
Now they open down here.
They were never one there because she told us.
I think there was a little lead up going on there where she denied what maybe it was going on. But you know what? I'm tired of trying to make same vote. I wanna get over it.
Yeah. Right, me too. And it's.
Me too.
They're they're we.
You know, I'm just kind of tired.
As these issues are not helping us.
She didn't.
Well, guys, I wasn't there, but I mean, we couldn't labor this training issue to death.
We could. And what's not.
So if we need to, if we need to get some training, I see.
And and I. Yeah.
We what do we have going on in September?
Schedule of meetings.
Uh September, we're planning to go to M L zero, which is Briscoe, and we have training for planning mission.
Is that like gonna be during the day?
Yes.
Okay, I need the dates way ahead of time.
They have not got a schedule yet, so we can't give you the dates.
I I work for myself and I have to block this stuff up like three months ahead. So.
Yeah, I I as soon as they give us a date.
As soon as they, as soon as we have any trainings or anything that we need to go to, I need the dates.
So so let me, before I adjourn the meeting, let me apologize to you, Joe. Intention to harm you personally or insult you personally, same to you, Ross, never any intention to harm you personally. I'm one both you gentlemen, and I have the most respect for all of you. The media will be out there. They will ask questions. They will say, you said this during the meeting and I said it, I said it. Uh whether whether it was uh the right thing for me to say or not, I stand by what I said. And I I do, I I wanna tell you that be prepared because whenever there's gonna be tough decisions we're gonna make, you got guaranteed that he is gonna exploit that all he can. He just read things today in the media blaming ESPN for all these problems. These people in the Chamita, they live in in Meta Nales. They're not even from ESPN, but of course, they wanna sell papers and they're gonna do that. They're gonna create this hype. So I'm sorry that that happens. I don't wanna fuel anything that we don't have to address. I know, but it's gonna happen.
And then I have a thick skin, so I don't care if I was accused of providing false information because that was my knowledge and that's what I provided. And so you can say it's false, but I really don't care.
Okay. Yeah, and and I hope that we s- I I hope we stay.
I I'm with you.
I hope we stick to the to the issue at hand and focus on what the item we're dealing with.
The other thing they give out in the paper is I guess I'm anti-woman too because oh, we're true Hispanic women trying to get.
We said.
Yeah, that's.
That's that that takes a little bit for.
There's just.
And I just say.
Because I told you didn't.
Yeah, no, I. Yeah, that was. That was.
Well, they can explain anything they can.
We have to.
But you know, do do.
But you need to charge us because I'm out.
Share is prepared.
We have to.
Very well.
Thank you for adjouring me some.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going home.
See you.
Good job.